8/31 is the special meeting. Councilmember present are Councilman Gobiz, Councilman Guerero, Councilman Testee, and Mayor Lieutenant Flores. We have new business to discuss, mainly regarding financial and auditing issues. New business consideration in action to receive and approve audit report and presentation of audit for fiscal year 2011 for all city entities with management recommendations. And we have Mr. Ted Wagner with us to do a presentation regarding the audit. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having me, and then to council. Our firm audited the financial statements that the City of Florisdale took your year ended September 30th of 2011. And we were able to issue an unqualified or clean opinion on those financial statements, and that is in your booklet on page one. I'd like to go into a little bit about the audit process because obviously this is much later than we're accustomed to having an audit right now. For years, this seemed had used the same fund structure and the same accounting structure and the same process for budgeting that's been prior to this council and prior to this administration, and it wasn't changed by this council or this administration. Our firm was brought in, this is our first year to perform the audit, and we provided a fresh set of eyes to evaluate the city's fund process, funds, its accounts, and how it's recorded transactions. And we found that the city was not in compliance with governmental accounting standard board requirement, and governmental accounting standards board is the standard setting body for all governments in the United States. We also found that you weren't necessarily in compliance with all the legislation. So we proposed a significant number of changes, which we have implemented in our audit report, and the city with substantial help from Tom Smith has changed those processes in the city in order to make them in compliance with GAASB, which is government accounting standard board and legislation. Normally what I do is go through the financial statements, but I think what I'd like to start with tonight is some of the issues that came up during the audit. We have enumerated those on page, starting actually on page 61. When we have issues with an audit client, those typically fall into three buckets depending on the severity of the issue that we found. The first bucket for findings or issues is called a material weakness. A material weakness is an deficiency in the internal controls such that there is a reasonable possibility that there could be a material misstatement in your financial statement that isn't prevented, detected, and corrected in a kind manner. The second bucket that we have used for some of the city's findings is a significant deficiency, and that's not nearly as severe as a material weakness, but it's important enough to merit your attention. So what I'd like to do is start out by discussing the material weaknesses and the response to the city during the audit and since the audit. The first is the city's accounting structure. There are certain things that are required to be set up and accounted for separately, not separate cash accounts, but a whole separate set of books. And that would include the street maintenance of funds, it would include court technology, courthouse security, child safety, state arbiters, and as I mentioned, the street maintenance back. So all those should be set up in a separate fund to have their own accountability for revenues and expenditures and cash balances in the whole place. We have adjusted the audit report to reflect those funds, and the city is setting those funds up on its book as well. Now, in the past, that's been accounted for as part of the general fund, and it shouldn't be. It should be a full and separate set of books, because legislatively, you require a piece of separate accountability for those amounts. In addition, you have a debt service fund with capital projects fund that weren't being handled correctly, so we have made adjustments this year. The debt service fund should receive all the debt service taxes, the GTS, and Adalorn taxes, and it should make the debt payments. The capital projects fund should have all the proceeds from the 2008, later refunded 2011 bond issue and the related expenditures that had been incurred on that over the years. So again, we have changed that for the audit report for year ended September 2011, and the city has changed those, treated those funds as well. And again, they are in the process of reclassifying 2012 transactions that conform with that new fund presentation. The second material weakness that we found was that bank accounts were not reconciled, and the transactions weren't properly processed, and that often, the expenditure was embedded against the revenue. And in the accounting process, you have revenue accounts and expenditure accounts, and we're always recording the growths on those. The city became aware that those reconciliations weren't happening. Tom came in and had the reconciliations for 2011 completed by January of 2012. And again, I say that the transactions were netted often, and that resulted in some pretty goofy looking things. For example, you might have a revenue account that was negative, which wouldn't make sense. And through the accounting process and Tom's help in reconciling and closing the books, we were able to get those accounts the way they should look, and thus, we got the issue of clean opinion on the financial. The third material weakness was in what we call the monitoring area. And we feel that, given a good accounting structure, you should be able to review a budget actual on a monthly basis. And that obviously had not been occurring because there were some issues with respect to the accounting of transactions. And as a result, after we have reclassified the funds the way they should be reclassified, the general fund has a deficit in its fund balance at September 30th of $166,000,385. So had you been able to see that process just of the general fund and its budget actual, actually couldn't pay it so that you don't end up with a deficit at the end of the year. Accounting processes like general entry bank deposits, disbursement, should all be subject to review and oversight with a second set of eyes. It's a good accounting policy to have good segregation duties. And your accounting software, ENCODE, should be monitored for correct defaults. I don't think your defaults in payroll are set up right. In other words, when payroll's entered, ENCODE knows where to spend the various deduction amounts and expense amounts, but I don't think they're all quite right, so we have to fix those as well. But I have a fixed ENCODE, so that's something that you'll all feel in the future of getting put in the on the horn and having to help you with what is faulty. The significant deficiencies, those not quite as severe, include a segregation duty. Typically, especially in a cash function, the person that collects the cash, who records the cash, who reconciles the cash should not be the same person. Or there should be some compensating control if your staff is way too small. Again, it's having that second set of eyes take a look at those transactions and see if they're reasonable and proper in light of the structure of the accounting system. I should mention that the city manager reviewed all of the personnel and he was in payroll, so we didn't have any issues with respect to that, because he had that second set of eyes that he was asking questions, he really was looking at. But the other areas such as reconciliation, general entry approval, purchasing, all those things should have a second review, a second kind of process so that we're sure that one person is doing too much in that single area. The next significant deficiency relates to cash. We found that too much cash is being kept in the vault at the same time of the month when you're collecting utility billings and so forth. So we are recommending that, while you might have several deposits in one day, that's probably preferable to keeping any cash in the vault overnight. Now, the vault is typically kept, well, it is kept locked and not locked at night, and has restricted access, but still, it's just not a comfortable feeling having too much cash in that vault for any period of time. Now, there are times during the month when your collections are real low, when you've got a lot under to come in, and we're not so concerned about that. But using his good judgment, I would recommend the minimum level that you'll keep here to yield a deposit for if it's going ahead and taking you to loan. Another minor thing, the city was carrying a bank account that didn't belong to it from the firemen's relief fund. We got that off the books, and then on to found another account that we hadn't gotten on the books, so we were able to get that cash account on. Either of those are really material to the city. Minor thing is payout to allow some cash doors in the utility area. We recommend to keep the receipts clean and not do payouts, and have a separate hidden cash account that's reconciled monthly to handle those transactions. The last is, let's try and do that. The city should have an investment policy that's required by public funds investment act. And that policy, while it wasn't in place, where investments were compliant with what the state expects for investments to the city, that it's safe to burn and liquid and then return. So, oh, you don't have a tax provision with respect to guarding your cash, it's a matter of having compliance with public funds investment act. And the last is the city operates a pool concession, and the 4A has a concession stand where they were collecting sales tax on certain sales. And the 4A had not filed a sales tax return for years, yes. Now, they did file a return when we discovered that, and they are currently up to date, 4A is up to date. I know the city's going to be opening a pool for reasons, so we'll need to be real aware that these collections will require to collect sales taxes even if those amounts are due as well. So given all that, we were able to issue a clean or unqualified opinion on the financial statements largely due to the efforts of Tom and the city to get these things corrected, recorded the way they should be recorded. So we feel like the end result is, we were able to get where we wanted to be last December, which is took us a lot longer to do that, the additions that we talked about. What I'd like to do now is just kind of go over, if I could, the financial statements. I'm going to go over them in a great deal of overview, so if you have any questions or comments, feel free to let me know in the comments. Following our clean opinion is the management discussion and analysis on page three. This is a good executive summary of the next 50 pages that follow, this is 65 pages of the fourth year. So I'm not going to really go into that, but that's probably a good thing for kind of overview for you all and certainly your constituents to read. As with all governments, we're required to show you two different financial perspectives of the city. The first one is what I call a full accrue. The second one is more cash basis, or what money did we take in and where did we spend it? So we have sets of financial statements satisfying both of those criteria. The first one, there is what I call full accrue, is called the government-wide financial statements of page 10. You see the assets, including the land, construction progress, property, equipment, infrastructure, all of the assets of the city, which again includes roads, streets, bridges, the whole thing, net of depreciation, with $17,764,000. Your liabilities, government-wide again, are $10,330,000. In the business-type activities, that's water, sewer, refuse, which we move into government or business-type funds, and the cemetery, their total assets, including a plant, were $3,756,000, and their liabilities were $116,017. The next statement that I'm going to show you is almost impossible to read, so I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail, it's on page 14. This is the governmental accounting standard board idea of a new document, because it starts out with expense by each year departments, administration, of course, labor department and so forth. And the next three columns show what your charges were, say, for example, the police department issuing tickets. So we're going to have some revenue coming in to offset that expenditure. We're also going to have capital grants and contributions, giving us total cost of governance, if you will, for each of those departments. For example, municipal court actually brought more money in than expended in its salaries and expenses, so it contributed to the city about $20,948. Now, these departments aren't meant to break even, and that's why we have governments, and that's why we have property taxes. But the idea is to show the constituents what their property taxes support that's net of all these fees that you've taken in. If you look down at the bottom, the revenue starts coming in on page 15. Property taxes, government-wide, with $768,000, sales taxes were $1,142,000, and so forth. So that is what paid for all of those services. So on a governmental-wide basis, you had a change in net assets, net income, if you will, of $385,108. And we show the business types, they had net income, if you will, and that's the fifth number up in the bottom, $678,601. And then, of course, we show related entities on these government-wide reports too, the 4A, the FDIC, and the FELTS, because you all had influence and control of those entities. Now, those aren't separate entities, they are not part of the city per se, but for a complete presentation, it means it's a scene that you have all these other associated entities in the city, so that's why those columns are out there on the left. Woo, glad I got through that one, that's a tough one to go through. I'm going to ask you to look at page 16. Now, we're back at the governing level, we're looking at those funds that we talked about a little earlier. This shows what your current resources are, what cash, receivables, these other funds do we have that we look at every day when we're here, and what are obligations against that current cash? So again, we're taking a current look here. It's one year's worth of resources, one year's worth of resources and one year's worth of expenditures, if you will. Not looking at fixed assets and not looking at long-term debt, that's down the road, we're going to pay all that. So in a general fund, you see that your assets were $534,000, your liability was $706,000, giving you a deficit of $166,385. Now, part of the reason for that is, we've reclassified a lot of items, cash, revenue, expenditures, that you were accounting for in that general fund, either the funds where it belonged. We've reclassified again capital projects into street maintenance tax, courthouse technology, all the ones that I mentioned here a little earlier. So marching across that page, you have a debt service fund that has a fund balance of $7,041. Capital project has a fund balance of $434,000, and all those other funds that I just mentioned here have a fund balance of $55,729. I'd like you to take a look, if you would, really quickly at page 20, which is, well, actually, page 20 is the balance sheet of the enterprise funds, mainly something that I'm calling as a form of payment. And these funds are not called government funds, well, they're called enterprise funds because they're intended to break even or even make a little profit, they're intended to be self-supporting. So they have debt sales tax, they don't get Adalorn tax, they must be self-supporting. Water and sewer increased its net asset by $665,000, mainly due to an operating transfer in from capital projects to pay for that plant that you all had constructed, which is a proper transfer in. The refuse fund lost a little bit of money, $767,000. The cemetery made $13,884. So your business-type activities increased fund balance by $670,641. So those are all in fairly good shape. Just mentioning passing, on page 28, you have certain funds that really don't belong to you, but you've got cash, like the farms, or the farm house has some cash as a trust fund. You've left money for FELTS and remitted to them, and these were just instances that were due to FELTS $1,000 a year. You have that riverbank tip where it's a tax implement fund that the county sent to you, and then you forward that on to that gift that had $55,000 a year. So those aren't really part of the city's funds, so we have to show them the separate side. Now, I'm going to get into a little bit of footnotes and hopefully the budget, and then wrap up. If I could ask you to translate this 37. As I mentioned, the city has not adopted a formal investment policy. However, its investments are in Texas class, which is invested in U.S. treasuries, it's into the L and E money market, which is in money market accounts. You have a little bit of cash on hand, a little bit of cash in the bank. Your total cash was $933,693. And if it's in safe investments, your return is lousy, but so is everybody else's, as long as you can preserve that, that cash balance, then you have met the requirements we have, even though you don't have that investment policy. We do footnote capital asset on page 41, and I'm not going to do a great deal of detail, but just so you know there, we tell you what the assets were of the city itself. And then on 42, we show the assets of the business-type activities. And also on page 42, it belongs to the debt. One thing I'd like to maybe quickly mention here is that historically, some of the debt was recorded on the 4A and the FDIC. After reading those bond documents, that is not their debt, it's your debt, so we put it on the city's book. However, you have an interlocal agreement with these other entities, so they will contribute to making those payments. So that was kind of a change that we showed on the books, and that, yeah, you've got the debt, but you also have this receivable for each other, and it helps you make those payments. So in the big picture, the result is the same, it's just that we wanted to sure we recognized that, that on the state books were of long. We did have prior fair adjustments, those are on page 46. There are adjustments that we had recorded that had been audited in 2010, we would have looked those adjustments. And again, it's a little bit of a perspective change on how GAASB expects these on these audit reports. The last thing I'd like to show you is on page 52. And this is the general fund's budget to actual. You didn't amend the budget during the year, and you show, let me just show you an example here of how realigning these funds can really affect how your general fund looks. Property taxes, you had budgeted collections of $850,293, but almost half of that belonged to the debt service fund, so you removed that out of general fund and put it in a fund where it should have been booked. So your actual collections relating maintenance and operations were $414,460. So while technically, you were under budget on a property tax collection, that's explainable because we realigned your funds to make them compliant with GAASB, with the GAASB. So the same thing, you had street maintenance tax where I knew you budgeted in the general fund, you removed it out, put it in the fund where it belongs. So while you didn't amend this budget, it kind of looks goofy against actual because we hadn't anticipated the realigning of these funds, and we have to for all purposes. So you had originally budgeted, now, you know, I'm not sure it makes sense to talk about it because we have so many things mingled in the budget that really don't belong there in the general fund schedule, but it does look a little lost. That's my presentation. Is there any comments or questions for the council?
Just one comment or a question, Pat. You said that our accounting practices have been done like this for, prior to this council, prior to this administration. Could you tell, through your audit, how many years back it has been done this way?
Well, we went back through prior monitor and looked at some of those schedules based on your budget schedule, and I want to say it went back to at least 2005 and probably prior. You know, it's hard to change that momentum, and it took a fresh set of eyes to recognize that, so it's been a long time, it's hard to say.
I'm going to ask you a very pointed question. There was allegations, even a lawsuit filed, that there was $5.2 million missing from our budget. Did you see anything like that?
No, sir, we found no missing funds. We found that there, and we maybe looked, we tried, we've done the price cash counts, we looked in detail at these areas, there were no missing funds. And sir, had there been missing funds, you would have heard from me long before tonight, so.
I noticed that one of the pages here talks about the credit risk. Could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yes, sir. Investments are subject to several different kinds of risks. And a credit risk is, you're invested with a shaky entity. In other words, their longevity can vary too, and I can answer that. So credit risk is, the party that you're invested in is shaky, and therefore, your investment is also shaky. And the public funds investment act has said, you can't invest in things unless they're rated triple A or better. And you can buy treasury bonds, you can buy municipal, you can buy lots of stuff that they have to be rated top, or you can't invest in. And your investments aren't mean, with Texas class, it's rated triple A, not standard or equal.
Any other questions or comments, council?
You know, we, I know that we looked into, I think in May, when we first got in, we wanted to make everything transparent. I know that we looked at different programs to implement to pretty much separate everything to begin with. I know we had talked about entities being audited, which we did, we looked at, but, you know, having said that with your, with what you've seen, what I've seen, do we have the adequate program for, for, you know, separating all these different entities and, you know, tax information or accounts or, you know?
Mr. President, are you referring to the accounting program? Yeah, ENCODE is actually a very common and a very good program, and I believe that it's probably the best program for the city. My only comment would be that it has to be used correctly, and it was, that program wasn't the problem, it was using it in the method that it was intended to be used.
I know that we also looked into, actually hiring a CPA or comptroller, would that probably be a, something positive or reinforcing for the city personally?
Absolutely, like, you know, the city's not a city, but you've got a lot going on down here, and you really need somebody who knows how to properly account for that, and as you say, provide the transparency with all those activities.
I mean, having said that, I mean, I do defend the person who actually worked on accounting, because of some issues, I guess, bank money situations two, three years ago, they moved someone in there that wasn't prepared for that, so I do defend her in saying that they should have helped somehow, some way, and that's what we're looking at now, for sure.
I'm absolutely with you there. It's not necessarily a function of, you know, main intelligence, it's the training and knowing, you know, what those accounting transactions should apply. I'm absolutely with you on the training.
I think the other thing you were talking about, I think you were talking about the safe itself, reconciling and so forth. Would you recommend that they set a certain or minimum or maximum total per day that they reconcile daily and, for instance, keeping money on hand you were talking about here? They create, they get payments throughout the day, creating a surplus of money inside the city hall. Would you recommend that we probably set an estimate of, say, $300 balance, and that's all we keep? Anything after that reconciled, deposit, and keep that $300 balance? Is that what you're referring to?
You're on the right track there very much what I was trying to, let me just mention that the cash is reconciled daily in the cash doors. They close out, we walk through that process, we surprise them, we show them, we saw that that process was working. What's happening is, they'll reconcile that cash, they'll store it in the vault, and then make up a large deposit at some point, usually, not that long, I mean, it's not sitting there that long, but, you know, the risk of having held up tomorrow after I send this, there are tens of thousands of dollars in that. And I think maybe 300 might be a little small. It's like, what's your, what's our risk level? Is 5,000 might be your risk level. So even though that cash is still reconciled, and even though it hasn't, the process hasn't been completed, we can sure take that cash today, because we know how much it's worth.
Any other comments or questions, council?
Yes, I have one. I feel that this could have been a presentation and discussion, not in making a improvement on it, because having just received this here, how can I ask you questions when I haven't seen it?
I absolutely agree with you.
Let me answer that question, Pat. Councilman Guerero, you were the one who made the motion that the city manager had to have this by June 1st. Tomorrow's June 1st. Tomorrow's June first to start, uh, no, you made the motion to have it all done by June first. Am I right or am I wrong?
Yeah.
Was that from the director?
The director from the council was, was, was to give this, uh, this, I, I want to add a couple things, Mayor, when I'm allowed to.
Sure, thank you. Is there any citizens input?
May I introduce my colleague, David Schuman? She was instrumental in helping with the, with the, with.
And thanks for all the time that you've spent here in Florida.
Yeah. A problem, I'd play. Is this annual audit not done?
This is the annual audit.
But, I mean, was it one done in two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine?
Yes.
And, and these accounting slappings were not found then?
Uh, Ms. Merkis, Ms. Wagner indicated she's our new CPA, uh, things are, will be done or looked at, it's different set of eyes.
But y'all were on the council and, uh, right?
Yes, but I'm the same CPA. If you don't want to answer that.
No, I should say absolutely, you require, you rely on the CPA and, uh, you know, it's not like, like saying anything to the, about the former CPA, the, you know, I don't want, but, uh, you know, there isn't a whole lot of room for different presentations in my view, but government accounting and reporting is significantly different than any other kind of accounting report.
Oh, I know.
And if you don't, yeah, and if you don't know, you know, what you don't know, that it can, you know, you may report it.
And did you want to make some comments?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that we understood, we know that the audit per se unofficial deadline, six months, Ms. Wagner has been in here from, from the onset, uh, new CPA, had come into a, uh, a city that was in turmoil with so many issues at that point in time. Uh, her and her staff have other clients, her and her staff have, uh, other duties as far as, uh, during tax time, tax return and whatnot, other aspects of their job. So they have been an excellent firm. Uh, this council sitting up there right now has directed this city manager, city administration to do a thorough, uh, audit of all subsidiary entities, something that has been done before, one thing. If, if you read this report and it's entirety, uh, the budget is, is, uh, the budget amount is a lot larger than what this council approves for our operating budget. We've learned a lot during the process of changing audit, uh, our, our previous auditor retired and, uh, went on for bids legally, got, uh, an extremely good firm, we've done some background checks on it. And, uh, again, I want to make sure that, that the citizens know and, and we have to at this point in time make it known that it's not about Jim Evans, it's not about Andy Johnson, it's not about Danny DeHaas, because those are the names that are brought up. It's about the city of Florida and those working productively to move on, not destructive, not lawsuits, not petitions, not anything like that. Those are citizens, right? That, that is correct as a citizen of Florida for myself. But we are in the process, this council member is in the process of changing things. Uh, we've got two new council members that are new, so they weren't here in, in nine, eight, seven, but you know what, they're still responsible, just like this administration. And, and we've enjoyed, I have enjoyed, uh, working and, and being put to the test to say, we want better. But better takes time and better, uh, better as far as master plans, better as preparing our, our city for the future includes everything. And finances aren't something that you can just, uh, grab five dollars in a couple of quarters and, and count. It, it takes thorough and that's what you ask for and that's what we provided tonight. Uh, the reason and behind it taking so long were all the legal issues that we have to comply with, were all the regulatory agencies that have come in and looked over our bills. So we appreciate the, uh, the comments from yourself and, uh, we'll receive official comments later stating that no money was ever used, you know, where things not done, uh, best practice, as we said, of course. But, you know, it's your job, you sit up there, uh, Councilwoman Gettle and the rest of you, you sit up there and you make these tough decisions, you make these tough directives and we follow. That's our job, so, uh, you know, I, I'm anxious to hear any kind of response from the citizens because everything that they've asked for, we've complied with.
I would, you know, I'd like to ask you a question, Andy. At what point will you have a plan to change the process of implementing?
That young man, Larry Tomlin, that's been working on this, uh, at this point in time during this coming budget cycle, are we gonna clear everything up and approve everything, uh, to the close? No, but we are on a fast paced track to change our, our whole budget process to comply with whatever we need.
What about the technical part of this?
The technical is, is an issue. And, uh, and, uh, Ms. Wagner made mention, operator error on some cases, but there is some mapping issues that, uh, that Sherri Collett has found and she's got experience in that, she's been to the train since we started the budget process. And we're trying to get those squared. Was it set up initially when the system was put in place? No. And that's something that we have to work on, but, uh, you know, that's our job and we'll continue to work on it.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the auditor's report?
With the citizens' district.
I did ask.
I was waiting my turn, I was unfortunately.
You must, from the, I'm a couple of, since I was called in, I was still to need, I
don't want to seek a little clarification based on Councilman Guerrero's comment. One, is this the first time the council members have seen this audit? Do I understand that correct, that you didn't get this to prepare for before the meeting?
That is correct.
Okay. Secondly, uh, does the completed audit satisfy your motion? Accepting the audit, that seems like another issue to allow for council to study this and citizens to study it, to be able to ask some questions versus listening to just that report and not being able to say it. If I understand her comments, you know, there was some accounting structure problems, um, some, but many material weaknesses in there that in comparing to the old books is, cause it takes some time to understand. And I think Councilman Guerrero's comment about not approving this, you can accept it, but not approving it as the audit until all the questions have been answered, is a fair request.
Is there a motion?
Have another question, Mayor.
Yes, fine.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I too would like to please encourage you to reconsider, uh, the action tomorrow. When I hear transparency, that brings to mind many different thoughts and it seems to me that as a council, I know you want to be very well prepared and be able to kind of digest all this information, be able to ask, ask good questions. If you have just very recently received it, whether it be today or two days ago, uh, that just does not give sufficient time to look over this. So I would ask you and encourage you to please give some time for all the council members to take a look at this so that you can further ask questions and just have a better understanding of where, where we are as a city and therefore you can ask the right questions back to, to our auditor and we can continue being on the right, right foot as, as you speak about it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll certainly hand your hands full. Get this all straight out, a lot of accounting practices and everything that need to be changed, updated, brought up to code and everything. Fifty-five pages of detail? Sixty-five pages of detail. And she admitted how, how much y'all have to digest. You have an executive level summary and while you are the executive branch of the city, you still need to understand the details and to turn around and approve this, um, okay, approve, except, I'm not sure if that's the proper word, but y'all need to take a look at this before you go for it.
Is there a motion to approve the auditor's report?
I got one more.
Comment?
Mine will be a simple question. Is your city charter that's currently posted on your website, the current charter that you walked away under?
Yes, sir.
It is.
Believe so.
According to that charter, your audit should have been done by the end of the fiscal year. It also says that in line about twenty-seven, that the independent auditors, or the independent audit city account shows down a number of three of you folks of the five, and you're supposed to present the audit to the council and then you do this. So you're not even complying with your current city charter the way that I've read it.
Anybody else? None of us have a motion to approve the audit for fiscal year twenty-eleven?
I make a motion to table, uh, to receive and approve auditor's report and presentation of the audit for fiscal year, uh, for all entities with management recommendations until all of us can review the presentation of the audit.
There's a motion to table by Councilman Gettle?
Y'all need to table this, y'all need to get above this, okay? Y'all just did the right thing.
Motion dials for a second. Is there a motion to approve the auditor's report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the auditor's report and presentation of the auditor's, if I'm here now, with city entities within all the management recommendations.
I second that.
Motion by Castillo, second by Gomez to approve the auditor's report for fiscal year twenty-eleven for all city entities with management recommendations. Don't care if I say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one. You know, with all due respect, you know, we hired a licensed CPA to do our audit and we're telling her we're gonna study your, your audit. None of us here are CPAs. That would be the same like, like telling Lou, we're gonna question your legal decision too, we study it ourselves. Now, why do we have to, why do we need CPAs? Why do we need attorneys? Why do we need engineers?
It's in your charter.
Why are you raising your voice?
It's in your charter.
Consider, this item, consideration and action to receive presentation of bump in savings year to date, budget to actual comparisons. Mr. Tom Smith?
Mayor and Council, uh, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Uh, I have tried, tried to prepare, um, a package that tries to concisely demonstrate where you're at year to date for the six month period ended March third birthday.
I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna ask the citizens, if there's a conversation between each and the neighbor, take it outside, please. We have to need complete concentration here.
Andy's running, I need concentration. I appreciate that. Um, I've tried to take what I think is, um, an overview, tried to give you, um, kind of a concise way to look at where you're at year to date without getting into, uh, extreme detail. And to the extent you would want more detail, it's, uh, these documents are built on that detail. So I'm going to try to walk you through, uh, what I've done with these five pages. Uh, if you look at schedule one, does everybody have schedule one? You got it, yes?
I don't hear you do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were disagreeing. Okay. Uh, the first schedule at the top, I have labeled schedule one and it's, it shows each of the funds in the city. And I want to caution here that this is still using the old structure, it has to be, it has to be revamped to reflect the best practices that were in process of implementing. But for the time being, we have, uh, from top to bottom, water and sewer fund, general fund, revenue fund, cemetery fund. And in the left column, we show our budget, year to, uh, your annual budget. In the middle, it shows what you have received and expended for the six months to date. And to the right, your budget remainder in each of those major categories. So this gives you the overview of where you're at. In other words, the water and sewer fund has fifty-five percent of its revenue budget remaining. It has fifty-five percent of its expenditure budget remaining. In other words, the, the general conclusion for, roughly on track. Okay? That's the big picture now. If you would like some more detail than that, you can go, and next to the water and sewer fund, I've labeled the schedule two. So if you go back to schedule two, you will see some more detail, should you desire to see it, of, of what, what drives those numbers on that B schedule. And what you can see in here is that those various categories, there's some budget variances on, but in the aggregate, aggregate, it's pretty much on track. There are some issues to be addressed that management's looked at. Uh, for example, in this water and sewer fund on, on the schedule two, we see that our, our operating costs are higher than we expected. Well, and the, and others, you can sort of look at that and for example, it's those , what's disposal costs is much higher than anticipated. Why that is, I, I don't know, Andy, but I know that's the item affecting it there. So to these things, a lot more detail, you look at the schedule two and the water and sewer fund. In the general fund, you can look at schedule three and see what's, what's going on and get more detail. But in the general fund, you'll notice that you have only forty-three percent of your revenues remaining. All of you say, well, wow, how come? Well, you take property taxes are not local, so that's not an unexpected result. And your expenditures, you know, you have forty-five percent of your budget block. And for more details, you can go to schedule three and see the expenditures by the categories broken down as personnel, operating, capital outlay, et cetera. And then I've generated behind that what I call a schedule three A that presents that information, that's those same dollars, but by department. So you can look and evaluate by department overall how you're doing year to date. Um, one thing that, that will show up right away is on that schedule three A, on your administration, your, uh, operating costs, your year to date actual is three hundred and sixty-five thousand. So you burned up almost all of your four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar budget. And when we look at that detail, you have spent a tremendous amount of money on legal and professional fees this year. Tremendous amount. So, so that, you know, is the type of thing. And now I have not furnished all of the detail that's available within the accounting structure that shows the budget line by line. Uh, it's certainly available to anybody that wants to explore it, but it is very difficult to go to that level of detail and come to, uh, script on the big pictures. It's certainly available for those that desire to go into that. Um, another thing I'd just like to point out, being careful using these budgets and percentages is you always have to consider seasonal effects, like in the parks and rec department, well, and in the pool, obviously there, there's seasonal issues that come into play. So thinking about percentage expense doesn't look like it's spent much, well, it hasn't yet. So that, just keep that in mind when you're drawing conclusions about those items. On your revenue fund, you know, the big picture, uh, you know, in, in my book, as long as our budget, it is reasonably reliable and I have the reason to believe it, then your year to date looks like, you know, that's, that's comfortable. And then in the cemetery fund, here's another example, it looks like you, you burned up a, a lot of your, your expenditures, you got a lot left, well, you know, it's not many dollars, so it's not that big a concern down there. So that was. So, that was, this is my attempt to try to, to give you the ability to get an overall grasp on where you're at, budget to actual. And, um, I think in the future, our goal is that this should be presented monthly to you. And that it also should be expanded to include the, the balance sheet, to see your cash balances and so forth. And that's part of the design goal on, on this presentation. And if, uh, if the council would like to see this done differently, where it would be more useful to you, I mean, I'm open to do it. This is my best, my best guess, if it was useful to you. Is there any questions?
Any questions or any comments, the council?
Yeah, you mentioned the, uh, the, uh, general fund that we're talking about.
The general fund?
No, no, no. You mentioned legal fees. Do we have an idea of how much we use? I mean, would you have a total of what was that, say, these, uh, legal fees?
Yes, I think I've been, I remember. There's really, I was referring to two categories that I'll need to, uh, the, we have one category called professional fees and another called legal fees. And I'll tell you about both of them. Uh, the, uh, current year-to-date amount for professional fees is a hundred and sixty thousand. You budgeted sixty-five legal fees. Your actual was about sixty-eight thousand five hundred and you had budgeted for the year seventy thousand. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. You know, this actually is, um, this is actually, I actually like this type of statement. I mean, during the budget process, you know, we get sheets of paper that give us, you know, I can't, sometimes I can't even read between the lines. So, actually, this is actually a positive, if you're asking. And you can see the percentages, you can actually spill out and, you know, spill out the numbers. Actually, this is pretty sharp.
Well, thank you, but I, you know, I, I believe that it can be significantly improved without adding a lot of more pages. I'm not a politician myself, I've lost in the details, but you always want the ability, seeing the variance, to be able to drill down to that answer.
Tom, I think you did a great job on this very easily.
Yes, very good.
Especially if you agree that, that's what we've been asking, the, the percentage is being over or under, and so this helps a lot.
And again, uh, I welcome constructive criticism, uh, make, put links on there if there's any.
Well, the only, uh, thing that I would change is when we're in trouble with a percentage, put it in red.
I, I did use the color printer, but we have one. Anything else, Mr. Van?
Uh, just one question, I would add, you, you Tom, or Andy, or Lou, on the legal expenses, you said we budgeted sixty-five and we were...
I'll find a page right here.
Sixty-eight five.
Sixty-eight five?
You, your legal fees, which, which, uh, on this, I don't know who all that went to, I just know that's in that category. Uh, I don't know who the checks were made out to, and that could be found out, so. It's sixty-eight thousand five seventy-three, year-to-date for the six months, and you have budgeted seventy thousand. And, and I'll just reiterate, the professional fee, a hundred and sixty thousand five thirty-six, year for the six months, you have budgeted sixty-five thousand.
Mayor, we can, uh, be frank, we know where those expenses came from, but as we're concerned on legal and professional fees, it's been, uh, throughout our process of recall, throughout our process of lawsuits, throughout our process of, uh, extensive auditings done. Normal year that we had paid before has been nineteen thousand seven hundred for audit work, for a complete audit. Of course, it, this extensive audit has been, uh, a lot more, a lot more work, a lot more, uh, professional done by our new accounting firm, so that's where those additional fees are, their costs are.
Any more?
No, I just want to ask a question. What is, of the city attorney fees, where do those get budgeted at? Is any one of those professional or legal fees?
Legal fees.
If, there's no more questions, council? Any other inputs? Motion to approve the presentation?
I make the motion to approve the received presentation of the monthly statements year-to-date budget to actual comparison.
I see.
Motion by Gomez, second by Flotis, to approve the presentation of monthly statements year-to-date budget to actual from Mayor's, all who care, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next slide, consideration in action to receive presentation of the budget scheduling. Thank y'all, thank y'all both here.
Thank you.
Be safe on your way home.
Thank you very much.
Consideration action, receive a presentation of budget scheduling process June through September for this every year, September twenty thirteen.
Mayor, Council, thank you. And, uh, just, uh, just on a note, uh, it wasn't a call-out, Jim, it's, it's a matter of fact of what's publicly spoken and the names, and I included myself too on the hand. Uh, one of the things that we want to do different this year in addition to, uh, stakes and things that, that you can pick. Improving things that need to be improved was for us to have a session, and adult citizens are always welcome at our budget workshops. Uh, we would like to have a citizen's input, because, uh, to allow us to work hand-in-hand with everybody who's already on the feed on the budget and, uh, completed in this coming year's budget, so. Uh, we've got a couple of tentative dates on the floor real quick and then allow the council to decide. One of the things that, that Tom and staff have been working on was, of course, improving our budgeting process to reflect more so what, uh, what's really occurring in our city and what we need to, to work on. We've got citizens input, uh, June twelfth, twenty twelve, budget workshop, June nineteenth or twenty-first, budget workshop, June twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, budget workshop, July tenth or eleventh, and budget workshop, July seventeenth and July nineteenth. We can schedule, or you can have some time to look at that. I, I prefer to add at least a citizen's portion approved, that we can get together and put our heads together on what direction we want our city to go. We are growing and we do have a lot of activity and we do, uh, have time on, on contractual service. He and I are talking about the possibility that they can continue in full-time, that's something that we're working on. But I, I sure would like to have, uh, the, the citizens that show that want interest to sit and, and work with management and staff and say, what do we want, what do we want to propose to the council? How much money are they gonna cost? Uh, we did, uh, advise each executive within our city structure that the, the council approved, uh, to give us a whistler of things that they want. That way, with a dollar amount that we can, uh, place before the council starts figuring out. Uh, Tom has always, uh, made a good point, you know, you can present a balanced budget to the, uh, the council, which is something the charter says, but be realistic, you know? Put it all together and, and send it there and then start cutting back or figuring out how you're gonna, uh, generate additional revenue to, to cover that, so. It's something that we need to be, uh, look forward to doing this year with the citizens that are interested to sit down. Tom's an extremely intelligent man and extremely, uh, open to, uh, suggesting himself.
Do we have a printout of the dates and just missions, Andy? Uh, that's fine, we can just get this later.
If I, if I protect, I want to remind the citizens to, to, to pay attention to who shows up to your budget. Who sits here at this, at this desk. And I, and I mean that sincerely, because you gotta understand, during the budget process, we're all involved, all five of us, to be involved. When you have one missing and doesn't make the budget meeting, trust me, it, it's a deterrent to what we're trying to do. I want to remind everybody that that's our job, not only that, to be here awesome. Okay? I mean, we, we make, you know, and I, I want to, I want to make that known, that we, this is what we, we, we're here to do. We do that every year. Every year, we start the same budget process. And not only that, but I do want to tell people that we actually want to inherit and we ask that a comptroller be present at these meetings. That's something that we, we, we are trying to do to get into this budget process. So, it is a positive, not only for them to have gone through this, but also that there will be someone there present at the budget process.
Is there any citizens input on the dates?
No, I got it, but you show no interest in listening to us on any other manner, why should we be listening to us on the budget? That's it.
Diane?
I will be at the budget meetings as I was last year, but I would like to request copies of everything that we discussed today. Is that going to be available online or can I send this down?
As far as what, uh, the...
The reports that she gave?
The, 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 the city can get on, uh...
And the numbers that she gave?
Yeah, she's, she's gonna be sending me a PDF copy once the council approves it. Um, I'll have that available for more morning. You can email me or you can stop by and I'll be happy to get you a copy of that, of the PDF.
And it'll be your full report, right?
No, yes, the full report.
As well as the monthly statements that were provided to the council by the comptroller? Will those be, those exhibit one, two, three, and three A be posted online so citizens can review them? Somebody want to get this copy and...
Sold. Get your wallet out.
I guess, uh, for the, for the other citizens, we'll get you a copy. Just put it on the email.
I, I think it'd be easy to just as well post the PDF of the audit and the PDF of these on the city's webpage versus trying to email individual copies of it.
Okay. Is there a motion for the...
I move that we approve the budget scheduling process June through September for FY ending September two thousand thirteen.
Motion by Castillo, second, fine. By Flotis, all who care, say aye. All opposed? This carries four to zero. Let's go home and flush first.